Okay, it's nine o'clock. The meeting is called to order. We're meeting in the jury selection room, or the central jury room of the Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl. And if you'd please stand for the invocation.
Our gracious heavenly Father, Lord, as we gather today, we want to ask your wisdom be upon us that we make all of the decisions for the county under your guidance and under your leadership. Lord, be with the leaders of our country, be with the military, and, Lord, as they go out and protect this country, and be with us and guide us in all things that we do for thee. In the name of Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Join me in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and honor.
Join me in the pledge of Texas.
Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Y'all tricked me.
Changed, didn't we?
All right, Bob, do we have any special presentations today?
Yes, sir. Judge Commissioners, we're here to celebrate the anniversary for one of our people, and it is for 15 years of dedicated service to Captain Steve Smith with the Sheriff's Department.
Everybody come forward. Cynthia, you too, why don't you? And Mary, yeah, Mary.
Judge, we're from the Historic Grandberry Merchants Association, and we have an award that's been presented to the Hood County Courthouse from the Texas Downtown Association for the best restoration for 2013 for a city with a population under 50,000.
Very good.
Oh, nice.
Go around and get it, Judge.
Pictures.
Yeah.
Go around and get it.
Why don't you go down there and get it, Judge?
Go and get it.
Yo, you.
Yeah, what's going down there?
All right, let's all go.
Y'all get to do it.
We're not involved in it.
Is there enough room?
Let's go, take me dollars worth, let's go.
And while you're coming down here, we also won the People's Choice Award for Best Restoration, which was a popularity vote on Facebook for people who voted on which one was the best. And so, we're very, very thankful for that. We're very proud of our Hood County Courthouse.
Yeah.
Aren't you talking to a gift show?
Yeah, why don't you sit down there, and I'll take one with your hand.
I'll just refer.
Okay.
Let me get one with your hand.
Okay. And I give that to town.
Oh, that's great.
I think I can figure it out.
Mary, she's a tour guy.
All right, everybody.
And Mary, we have a little thank you from HGMA for all of your hard work to get all
of the paperwork together for us to submit the application. We could not have done it without Mary Sutton, and we hope that you'll just take this as a little token of our appreciation.
Thank you all very much for coming. you raise your hand? The sheriff has a form for you to fill out. Anyone wish to make any comment about any agenda item? Please say the sheriff. No one? Okay. The next item is the consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull anything off of the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to-
I believe that Courtney wants to pull K off just until she can get some verification on something with the city. So, I believe that just needs to be pulled for now.
We'll table K.
Also, Judge, not to pull it off, but just to notice, on B1, we're going to approve payroll, but also longevity. Two things happened here. There's 11 employees with over 20 years of service, and I was looking at this. It came out late yesterday afternoon. One of our employees has 27 years. You know, we pay longevity to our employees, but the fact is, this fell between two payrolls, and the Treasurers Department also went above and beyond to make sure our employees will actually get their checks before Black Friday. So, they went above and beyond. But when you look at the fact, there's 11 employees with over 20 years of service, that says a lot for some of our department heads.
Very good.
With that, I'll make a motion to pass the consent agenda with the exception of letter K, which is the libraries that she has to be tabled at this time.
All right, have a motion made by Commissioner Barry, seconded by Commissioner Rohn, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item K, which has been tabled. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is subdivisions, roads and plats. Road ops, no, nothing, but we have a public hearing to consider, take appropriate action on the replat of Lot 4R, Block 5, Sky Harbor, Section 3. Mr. Lenny?
Judge Commissioners, this replat proposes to combine lots 3, 4, and 5 into a single third of an acre lot called Lot 4R. The property is located within the Water Quality District in Precinct 4. The Development Department has on file a letter from the President of the Sky Harbor HOA acknowledging this replat. Staff has reviewed the replat of Lot 4R, Block 5, Sky Harbor, Section 3, and recommends approval as presented.
Okay, a public hearing is now open to consider this replat over in Sky Harbor. Does anyone wish to make comments about this? Anyone? Okay, then a public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve this replat.
Don't move.
Motion made by Commissioner Barry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rohn. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carried. Public hearing to discuss and consider the replats of lots 103R and 104R, Bentwater, on Lake Grandberry, Section 1.
Judge, the purpose of this replat is to make an adjustment to the lot line between lots 103 and 104. It proposes to move that lot line approximately 2 and 1/2 feet to the south, adding 21 thousandths of an acre to Lot 3, creating a 1 and 57 thousandth acre lot called 103R, and deducting that same amount from Lot 4, creating a 1 and 97 thousandth acre lot called 104R. The property is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct 4. The Development Department has on file a letter from the President of the Bentwater POA, having no objection to this replat. Staff has reviewed the replat of lots 103R, 104R, Bentwater, Section 1, and recommends approval as presented.
Okay, a public hearing is now open to consider these replats in Bentwater, Section 1, for 103R and 104R. Does anyone wish to make any comments about this replat? Anyone? Okay, public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve this replat.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Barry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion on the replat? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Lenny. Budget and finance, consider budget, line item amendments?
Judge Commissioners, we don't have a ready to hear, Mr. Lenny, but we do have some bills to pay.
Okay.
The bills come to $365,501.55. These are for your consideration. I've provided you a detailed list and a payment warrant for each one. Some of the larger items, we do have a VINE grant, which is the Victims Notification System. It's also called the SAVNS grant. It's through the Attorney General. We're required to first pay the company, Aperis Incorporated, $16,536. Once we have paid that, and then we certify to the Attorney General that we have fulfilled all the contract requirements of maintaining the information and testing the information, we'll be able to ask for that $16,500 to be refunded. To Benny Keith Company, $19,598.89 for jail groceries. To CDW Government, Inc., $16,941.91. This is primarily for the, I guess, the first wave of infrastructure hardware that the IT Department is going to need to get us from the Windows XP environment over to a Windows 7 operating environment. JP Morgan Chase Bank, $15,030.85. These are for various supplies and travel items that are purchased by credit card. To Mitel Leasing, $10,684 for telecommunications and equipment leases. One thing I would note about this is, we also pay Mitel for long distance, and ordinarily, that has been running between $700 and $800 a month. This month, the long distance component of that is just over $2,100. We've gotten rid of the AT&amp;T services for long distance, and Jackie has come up with a plan where he believes he can provide the number of minutes of long distance we need through charter and get us back to about the $700, $800 a month range. I don't want to get into the details that he would present on that, but I do point out that since AT&amp;T has turned that over, and Mitel is doing the long distance, the prices have gone up on that. To Net Data Corporation, this is our annual software licensing and maintenance agreements on the hardware, $111,705.50. On that program, part of that is for the general ledger application. And what Jackie has arranged with Net Data is that we will pay that each calendar quarter so long as we're continuing to use Net Data for our general ledger applications, and that is until we get the Tyler ENCODE conversion completed. To Somerville County, $20,482 for out-of-county inmates, and there are the other items that are listed on the one-page executive summary and also the 30-page detailed list. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about any of those bills.
The one to Dr. Bishop.
Okay, this is for jail medical. For the details on that, I would need to defer to the sheriff, but Dr. Bishop does provide medical services. I think there's also a small amount of that that has to do with testing of Hood County employees in the Sheriff's Department. Is that a contracted rate, or is that- To the best of my knowledge, it is, Commissioner.
Roger.
I don't want to speak out of turn if the sheriff-
It's about that much every month, so.
I believe it is.
It is a contracted, a yearly contract that it's done and out. He's been the only doctor that has bid on it for over the last few years.
So, is the rate contracted, or just a service?
Service and rate.
And is the rate on a per-month or annual basis, or do you-
It's paid out per month, but I don't remember if it's a per-month or a yearly deal, but it's a-
No, I just wanted to make sure it was a contracted rate, that it wasn't something that was just open-ended.
No, it's contracted rate.
Yeah, okay. That's all I want to know.
And like the auditor said, there's money that comes out of there to pay for-
Drug testing.
Psychological exams for the peace officers, jailers, and dispatchers.
Okay, so.
Do I have a motion to ratify paying the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Rohn, to ratify paying the bills. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the timeframe on the Hood County $6,500,000 unlimited tax bonds for 2013.
Judge Commissioners, I don't see a representative of First Southwest here this morning. Jim Sabonis and Andre Ayala have prepared this proposed schedule for the issuance. Should you proceed with the recreation center, I got a call yesterday from Dan Culver, who is bond counsel, and he says that before we issue the bonds, he's going to have to obtain the approval of the Attorney General. And what he has asked for in particular is the signed agreement between Hood County and the YMCA for the operating agreement, and also a check made payable to the Texas Attorney General in the amount of $6,500. This would be a non-refundable application fee. That is, I believe it's by statute, but we had a discussion-
We had a discussion earlier, because my question was, the voters passed the bond. We're issuing the bond from tax monies collected from Hood County. Why do we have to pay an Attorney General who's already being paid by the state an additional fee of 1%, $6,500 bucks? And I guess, I guess we do because-
Because they want the money.
It's the law made by the lawyers, yeah.
I believe it is statutory in this case, and not just a policy requirement of the AG's office.
Doesn't mean we have to like it. We've just got to do it.
But if you wanted to proceed, what I would like to ask you to consider today is, if you want to stay on this timeframe, what they propose is that today, you would direct me to let them go ahead and proceed with pricing of the bonds, and proceed with the first phase of this, which would be the $6,500,000 of debt. The second phase coming next year, which would be the $3,500,000 that remains.
Which will mean another $3,500 to the Attorney General.
No doubt. And then, they would be targeting the December 10th Commissioners' Court for you to actually review and approve the bids on those bonds, and then approve issuance of the bonds. And then thereafter, have the Attorney General consider and approve, and then the closing would be on December 31st, where we would receive the proceeds. And that would help keep the county as a small issuer, and make sure our bonds all remain bank-qualified.
I think that's the timeframe we have to try to follow. We've got to count on Stan to collect and interpret the information that comes in, or is directed to our bond agent.
Are you making a motion that Stan continued to work on this?
Yeah.
Move forward?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Rohn, seconded by Commissioner Barry, to permit the county auditor to continue looking at the $6,500,000 Series 2013 bonds. Any further discussion on this?
Well, Stan, for your information, I believe that closer to 10 for the executive session part, you'll have Todd Baker here and Dwayne Brinkley, so we'll talk to them about your one requirement of that letter, the users' agreement between the county and the Y. Okay?
Thank you.
So, we'll make sure we bring that up.
Very good.
All right, any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Miscellaneous, Elections Administrator, discuss and approve joint contract and joint resolution with the Republican and Democrat Parties? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I have the contract signed with the Republican and Democratic Judge, and then y'all need to, I mean Chairman, and then I need all y'all's signature on the contract also. And it's just a joint.
Now, the way I read the backup, what you're doing is now you're going to bill each party instead of, is that, would you explain this a little more in layman's terms?
Yes. Right now, we get all the bills, the county does, and then we bill out each party their part.
So, you're going to bill the Republican Party and the Democratic Party individually?
Yes, sir. That way, everybody gets their part, and it's not a split thing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Barry, seconded by Commissioner Rohn, to approve the joint resolution between the Republican and Democrat Parties for the 2014 primary. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Now, discuss and approve paying election workers for their regular pay rate during the primary election.
The state will only pay $8 an hour. I have it in our budget to pay them $10 an hour. I mean, the state will reimburse us. The Republican and Democrat Parties will reimburse us the $8, so actually, the county's only paying the $2. And I just wanted to make sure that that was okay, and that the Commissioners agreed, and that we could pay them the $10.
We've already passed that, haven't we, once?
That was for the school board election.
Well, that's for the-
And early voting, and the city council, and the school board, and the bond election. So, she's just ratifying now the primary and the general election, because the state reimburses $8, and she's asking to pay 10. So, I make a motion that we allow this.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Barry, seconded by Commissioner Rohn, to approve paying $10 rate for the primary, for the Republican and Democrat Parties.
It's in your budget, but we'll be reimbursed the difference of $2, is what you're taking out of your budget, correct?
Right, yes. And this would be for the runoff also, correct?
Yes. All right, any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. County Clerk, discuss and consider the county clerk's request to ratify the following: county clerk's fees, archival fees, appellate judicial fund, courthouse security, alternative dispute resolution, and law library fee, except report for the statutory county clerk fees.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I kind of decided after we had some little problems this year and last year over some of the fees that have gone on before I took office, and before most of you took office. And Dean and I went back, we pulled all of our fees, and put together a list of fees that need to be approved by Commissioners' Court. The packets that I gave you each have it listed, computer code that we use, what the fees are for, the amounts that we are charging that were approved, the statute, the date of the approval, and the line item where they're going. We did this because it was very difficult to go back and find some of these minutes. Some of the minutes where these things were approved, one of them was back in 1987.
Yeah, my dad's name's on it, that's why we-
I know.
Yeah, I saw that, too.
Yeah, they go back a ways. I've also provided for you the backup minutes. The archival fee was taken care of during a budget hearing. So, there are two sets of minutes, one for the open meeting, one for the deal, and I also gave you a comparison of what the budget had been in that, the previous year to that one, because that was the only way I could actually prove it didn't come out and say, yes, we're going to do it. It did it within the budget. The last thing I have is on the back, the back three pages are our statutory fees. Those are the fees that the county clerk collects. You'll see them on printouts now and then, and so on. And I wanted to give those to you, so you would have a better idea when you look at those printouts from time to time, what each of them are for. It's also got the law, how much we're charging, et cetera, and I just wanted to give those to you for your information. And I just ask that you ratify this. We plan to, every time we have any fee changes, we plan to bring it before the Commissioners' Court to ratify. It just will make it a lot clearer to everybody, and it will keep it easier for us to find if we're questioned on it.
Well, thank you. That's a lot of work you went through, so thank you for that.
So, what you'll do is, this table, you'll update this table each time?
Yes.
So, that way, the auditor, the treasurer, the courts can have it. You'll have it in record, so we won't have ARD funds, or whatever else we have-
Right.
-out there for 10 or 12, 15, 20 years. Okay. It is a lot of work.
Yeah. I'll entertain a motion to approve these fees.
So moved.
Motion made, who seconded? Do I have a second?
Yep.
Commissioner Rohn. A motion made by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Set public hearing to consider county clerk's archival plan. Yes, that's you.
You need to exercise, anyway. Yeah. Yes, I'm late on my archival plan this year. I apologize. With my husband being in the hospital, I didn't get it to you soon enough. I have the plan put together. I'd like to get the public hearing. I have to have that advertised 15 days prior to the public hearing, so that's why I chose the December date.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Barry. Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rohn, to approve the December 31st for the public hearing for the county clerk's archival plan. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mary. Consider and take appropriate action to accept an offer by the Reveal Media to provide seven body cameras. Yes, Constable?
Mister Judge, as you're aware, a few months ago, we discussed this around budget time, body cameras. The constables got together, and we have an opportunity through Veal Media to obtain seven through a sponsorship program at no cost to the county. We'd like you guys to approve utilizing these cameras at no cost.
Any kind of a fix on what they're going to cost us after the year's up?
It's open-ended right now for the use, as long as we give them feedback, negative, positive, whatever it may be.
You're also going to keep some kind of a record of what's made use of from a court standpoint and so forth, so that you have some grounds in the event we have to come back and budget this cost later.
Yes, sir, we can do that. Inside the camera, it has forensics. I've talked to Jackie a little bit about it. We're going to get together on the software, make sure it all works with our system. And once again, at any time, we can turn these cameras back in, and we don't know anything.
You know, but if you remember, the constables came to court about eight months ago, and everybody didn't know what they wanted, and we asked them to go out and test two or three different brands. And Mike and the constables got together and worked this out. This company's obviously a brand-new company, or they're trying new technology of some sort with a lapel pin, I believe.
It's a, right, it's lapel. It's smaller than the previous version, and it attaches in a different way, in a safer way. And what they're trying to do is, they want to get their product out there, and we're, there are seven units they're going to give us. We're not a 50 or 100-person department. They couldn't afford to give that camera away. So, we're kind of a test subject for it, but it's more than going Best Buy and buying a camera and sticking it on your pocket.
Yeah.
So, it's a good deal, though, that he went out and they at least did a lot of homework to figure this out, and it didn't cost taxpayers anything, but-
Yeah, my only concern is that, you know, use it in a way that you keep enough records regarding what transfers the court is.
It'll be similar to the vehicle cameras-
Yeah.
-the way that's used. It won't download automatically, but it'll be on your computer.
That's good.
I'll entertain a motion to approve- I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Roan, to have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Good job, Mike. Thank you.
Consider take appropriate action regarding proposal from Charter Communications for Long Distance Services.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. Just wanted to come before you today, and seeking your approval, to make some modifications, some changes to our long-distance telecommunications. For some time, we've been using long-distance from Mitel Net Solutions. Upon the moving from AT&amp;T over to Charter, which I knew would be a challenge for the county, and I appreciate everyone's patience in working with the Technology Department on that. Anytime you change carriers, it's a, it's an opportunity to show how, to show all the things off that are out there that you really have to find. With that, we've, we did uncover some things that we needed to work on. One of those was our long-distance. The long-distance carrier that we've had uses account codes. We've used those for some time to help divide up the long-distance between our departments. With the changes in technology and the changes in long-distance itself, we see long-distance much differently now than we did in the eighties, and even the early nineties and mid-nineties. It's just a much different product. And so what we found, whenever I went back and started looking at all the contracts, was that we were paying seven and nine cents respectively for interstate and intrastate long-distance, just so that we could use account codes. I started looking at what were the terms of the agreement, and it was an automatic renewing agreement. And I found out also that the agreement's coming due. So I looked up the, some of the terms, made some telephone calls to verify that with our representatives, and we are within the window right now of terminating that agreement if we so desire. Under our, under our provisions with Charter Telecommunications for our PRI, we can purchase long-distance in bulk. And we can purchase this long-distance at a much more reasonable rate that is really much more modern in today's terms. For instance, where we were paying seven and nine cents a minute for long-distance, we can purchase long-distance in bulk for about two cents a minute on that. So what I am proposing to the court is that we purchase minutes on each PRI. We have to purchase per PRI, and we have three, so we purchase three buckets of minutes, and that's pretty much their terminology, they call it a bucket. And each one of those buckets of minutes would be 20,000 minutes. That would be a total of $1,200 a month that we would be spending for those minutes. I looked up our averages for long-distance. Some months, we go 10,000 minutes, some months, we go 9,000 minutes, some months, we go 14,000 minutes. It's always staying in that realm, though, of where we are. We would like to have some room for growth there and change, being that we don't, we do not have our expanded scope like we did where we can call 214-972. That is something that only AT&amp;T can sell, is that scope. So we are put into a position where we have to dial the one to dial that, and I know that's been a very, very popular subject. I've had good feedback from that from several of you. And anyway, we were, we're spending around 800, 750, 850 dollars a month in long-distance right now with Mitel Net Solutions. But as Stan said, with the changes in us dialing these local or these expanded scope exchanges, that number has gone up. So what I'm proposing is that we do 1,200 dollars per month, which is a flat rate on that. We get those minutes, it's one payment. Stan and his department do not have to try to go in and sort out all the account codes and try to divide that up and break that down every month, but they spend time on that. This is a given number that is there every month that we can budget for. And then, we have also said, Stan and I sat down and said, well, you know, if we do run into a situation where we do see a bill that is over this amount, then we automatically should flag that, to review that, to see where is it? Which PRI, which department is it? Is there any, you know, area that we need to look at and review to see, is there a certain reason? Was there a certain case, or was there a certain incident or event that happened for us to warrant that? Just kind of in closing, before I, you know, look for questions, whenever we moved over from AT&amp;T to Charter, our planned savings was 17,500 dollars a year in savings by moving to Charter Business Communications. With these changes in the long-distance, it would change that number. The net number would then be 12,120 dollars a year in net savings. We're still saving money, but I believe that this is the way forward. I think it will make us more efficient, it will take some time off of our auditors' department on trying to sort this out and bring us forward. I think that the use of account codes at one time was probably very much warranted. You know, it may, it was in the time of minutes being so high, but in this day, today, and moving forward, I see nothing but long-distance still moving away and away and away to one day, we may not have long-distance even in the business sector, which is pretty much the only one that we have left. And I'd be glad to take any questions, answer, answer anything I can for you.
The only question I have is really directed at Stan. When you talked to us about this last week, Jackie, every line item or every budget has a telecommunications line. Stan, how will you collapse that budget to reimburse him for, when he pays this one-time bill, which, and I'd like to you, if you're going to speak, also, how much savings will it give your department each month when you ratify the phone bill for each department, per department line item?
I would say every time one of those phone bills comes in, my assistant spends a couple of hours at least on that phone bill, identifying the long-distance, billing that back. As far as the individual departments are concerned, I think what would be left with in the individual department telecommunications line would be anything for a dedicated fax machine, a fax line that has to be there, or some other separate billing, like, for example, in Acton, we're all on Windstream. They have an exclusive franchise in that area, so, you know, we're going to, we're going to have Windstream bills. And those tend to be the dedicated fax lines for our copiers. You know, the justice of the peace needs a dedicated fax line instead of having the voice-over IP protocol.
What I'm asking, though, is for this time next year, I don't want the budget, I mean, I don't want to just carry the telecommunications line over and over every time. It should be, as you said, for the fax line or an air card. Some people have air cards in their telecommunications line, but at the same time, if Jackie's going to see a savings, we've got to go through and identify, or he does, and bring back to the court, and you, how to collapse those departments that don't need a telecommunications line.
Correct. And what I would suggest, Commissioner, is that what would remain would be the air cards, the dedicated fax lines, those things that are separately identifiable, and there would no longer be a need to provide for the long-distance allocation going back to a given department.
So will that cost go into non-departmental?
Actually, what we did this year, Judge, was that, you know, given the fact that anytime we have a telephone problem, we contact IT and Jackie handles it, it seemed very logical to move that out of non-departmental and put it over into the IT budget, IT department budget for infrastructure services. And so we moved that from non-departmental over to IT. So Jackie would have more control, you know, we were asking him to be responsible for things over which other people had control, and that seemed like a mismatch. So if we're going to ask him to stand up for it, we wanted to give him some control over the situation, too.
Stan?
Talking about the control factors, anytime, and I'm speaking specifically now about the account coding process that we have now, anytime you make something simpler or more accessible, you're likely to have certain individuals who may abuse it. Are you going to be able to tell if that cost goes over the edge, where that abuse may come from?
Yes, sir, we will. It would be rather, you know, it may be a simplistic illustration, but it would be like having a family plan of minutes where, you know, your family shares minutes, and you've got one person who uses up all the minutes, and then all of a sudden, you've blown your budget for the month. We will have that ability, telephone line by telephone line.
Now, is this, is this an annual contract, or is this month-to-month?
This is a, the initial contract is just for one year, and then it goes into a month-to-month where we can terminate that if we see that this is not a good fit, or if we need to make modifications, or if we want to look at another, you know, a different provider, Commissioner, then we have that opportunity to take that. And there is no, there is no, you know, installation or setup fees involved in this.
The only thing I keep coming back to is that we can't do budget amendments and let people take telecommunications lines and move them and collapse them later in the year, because Jackie, what you explained to me last, end of last week, you have money to start paying these now out of your department. But as we get into the summer months, you're going to need budget line amendments to be collapsed out of other people's budget. And that was my question, Stan, is, you know, everyone needs to be part of the team. They're going to collapse their telecommunications budget because it's going to go back to basically his fund to pay the long-distance. It's not going to be able to be used for supplies or travel.
Right.
And the court just needs to be aware of that, as well as does everyone.
Yeah, every department.
Because it is a savings.
It is, it is a net, we're still in a, very much of a net savings, and I think that overall, Stan and I, you know, I've sat down with Stan and Gene at the auditor's office, and I've watched the process that they go through to identify all of these telecommunications charges. And it's been our goal to simplify this as much as possible. The, Stan was just, Gene was just inundated with AT&amp;T, and since we've gone through this process so far, we have identified hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of dollars of lines that were just so buried down into billing that were going so far back that were not in use anymore, that we've been able to terminate and do away with, that those have not even been calculated into the savings. But, you know, they're just numbers that get started, you know, 15, 20 years ago, that disappear into the immense network of billing that AT&amp;T has, so we've been able to kind of, you know, bring those to the front and deal with those now. So definitely, we're going to be saving money. Definitely, we need to always look at what our usage is, and keep an eye on that. And what this does, and what Stan and I just were discussing, is that any month that we see that we go over, number one, there should be, not be any reason we really go over, unless we have a catastrophic event, that would be a possibility. But that would be, you know, something out of the norm. But if we do see that, then we should flag that and review that, and like Stan said, you look and see, where was that coming from? Where did it happen? And then we sit down and we work with those people to resolve that.
But those new minutes are one cent, where the old minutes were seven cents?
We're looking, they're about two cents.
Two cents?
And also, Judge, if we do go over, we don't get a surcharge and go up to five or seven or eight cents, it's still at that same rate that we do have the over...
But now, when we do that, do we, do we have to buy another bucket?
No, sir.
It's just each minute?
It's per minute over that, Commissioner.
Okay.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve A and B, to authorize the judge to sign terminating the service with the current long-distance, and authorize the county judge to Charter.
Before we do that, I've got one question. Will we eliminate the AT&amp;T bill? Once we do this, is AT&amp;T no longer going to be a provider for it?
The only thing that AT&amp;T will be providing to us is the things that only AT&amp;T can provide in the area, which is our dedicated fax lines, the copper. You know, the AT&amp;T, you pretty much, you have to purchase those from them. But that is, Commissioner, pretty much, you know, that's just about all that AT&amp;T will be providing for us right now.
One thing I would caution the court about is that since Jackie has been trying to transition over from AT&amp;T through Mitel to Charter, this process has been a prolonged one. It is amazing to me that a large telecommunications firm like AT&amp;T has such difficulty getting back with us and communicating. But, I mean, the simplest of phone calls takes forever to get an appropriate response. And so we're having some areas where we have duplicated costs, where we can't just shut it down because of the impact on safety issues for the public. And in the long run, it's going to be very much to our financial benefit to make this change. In the short run, during that transition, there are some unavoidable duplications of costs.
We will see, we will see just, you know, as we end off of a month with AT&amp;T, just the partial bill there, and as we start. Fortunately, since we're already in place, a transition like this for just long-distance carriers is done at a level that does not impact service for anyone. There shouldn't be any changes for anyone in any departments that they see, other than they will not dial an account code.
But if we do nothing, our savings will be 17,000 a year, and if we sign this, they'll be down to 12?
No, it's, it's, it's actually going to be different, and I should have included that number in there, Commissioner, that what it is, because we have seen an increase in long-distance charges, specifically because we do not have that local extended area. So whenever people call 972 and 214, they have to dial one. So we were, we knew that we would see an increase in long-distance because of that, and AT&amp;T being the only service and the only provider that can sell that product by law. And so we knew that we would see some increase there. So now, we wanted to look at this and say, what can we do to simplify, be more efficient, and be better able to budget whenever it's time to budget, instead of kind of saying, we think we use about this many minutes in my department. This should be something that's very standardized throughout the year for us.
Your 17.5 was based off when we changed from AT&amp;T to Charter.
Correct.
And then when we started getting the bill, it went to 12.5, the savings, so you lost the five. But that's based off of 1,200 a month, and as Stan said in the bills this morning, we were being charged 2,000 this month. So by going to one penny a minute, set at seven cents a minute, you expected other savings.
Yes.
Right now, so that the court understands, we're going to have a savings of 12.5 for net.
But we won't be buying, buying minutes for a penny a minute. If we use, if we only use 10,000 minutes?
Right, over that.
It's going to double the cost per minute, because that, we've got a bulk rate. That, that two cents a minute only applies if we use all 20,000 minutes.
No.
No, it's two, no, it's, it's two cents.
Buy the bucket, use as much of the bucket as you want to be.
That is 400, it's 1,200 dollars, that is our, that is our cost whether we use five minutes, or 500 or 5,000.
But if we use 1,000 minutes, and we pay 1,200 dollars?
You are, you're...
Then we're spending 12 cents a minute.
You are buying that, but what we have to look at is what our average is, Commissioner, and what the reality is there of what we really do use, which, you know, on any given month, if there is something where we have a big caseload, and people are having to have extended calls, or if there is an event or an emergency of some type, we do see an increase. So what I did was I looked back, and I asked Gene to go back, and we actually went back two years, and looked at two years' worth of data to average out the amount of minutes, so that we felt like we were good. What is our amount over that, so that we have some room for growth and change or an event?
Well, I read the letter, we can change at any time. After a year?
After, after one year, we can make, we can make that change, we can, we could do that, and make a modification if needed.
I make a motion that we ratify 4A and 4B, allowing the judge to sign the documents terminating service, and authorizing the judge to appropriate documents with Charter Business.
Second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Roan, to authorize the county judge to terminate the service for the current long-distance provider, and to sign appropriate documents for Charter Communications. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carried. Thank you, Jackie.
Appreciate it.
All right, the next item is discuss and take appropriate action regarding the architectural construction methods, and we're going to convene into executive session to consult with the attorney on this, county attorney, and regarding the contract negotiations, and then we'll reconvene. And some of the things that we discussed was the construction, architects' construction methods, and we have, I'll entertain a motion to proceed with hiring the architect of Brinkley Sargent.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Roan, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion?
Is that, are you going to tie in allowing Todd Baker from the YMCA to help with the negotiation in writing this contract? You can tie that in the contract?
Yeah, we can, yes, let's do that.
Yeah.
You want to amend that motion and second?
I'd make, I'd amend the motion to include Todd from YMCA as the negotiator on that contract.
Okay, I have a motion made by Commissioner Roan, seconded by Commissioner Taut, to hire Brinkley Sargent as the architect with Todd Baker as an advisor on the agreement. Is that, is that the motion? As you said...
Yeah, that should be all right.
All right, then, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, second item is to do what?
We don't have to do anything now, do we get a contract back from Dwayne and then see where we go? I mean, we need, you know, Dwayne to come back.
Yeah, we need that agreement with Dwayne and his approval on that agreement before we can do anything else.
We need, where did Todd go?
He's back there.
We need also, he's got to have that between now and December the 10th. It's imperative that Stan has it to get it to Dan Culver, so the Attorney General can review it.
Y'all got those dates?
We'll have it by...
Monday? Monday? All right. Tuesday. All right, is there...
Bear that, Stan.
Is anything else in front of the court today?
I bet he does, or he won't get paid for it, because, I mean, we got to have money this year's budget, this fiscal year.
Yeah, we got to do it, we got to do it.
That's what it's tied to, Todd, we've got to have that, that amount of that budget released in this calendar year.
Yeah.
Okay.
You might have to before that, but I sent that to the board.
Why don't you send, send us copies of it, yeah, so we can be familiar with it before the...
I'll get it executed by Monday.
Okay.
All right, if there's nothing else in front of the court, we are adjourned at 10:43.